I'd like to call the August meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Rogers, Jimmy Rogers, to lead us in our invocation, immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please rise. Let us pray. Kind grace, heavenly Father, again, as we join here today, we thank you, Lord, lovely sunshine outside, we think of those lovely smiling faces that'll soon be back in these classrooms, in these schools. Lord, we pray that you help us keep working hard to have a good start for a new school year, bring all those children that have been there back to us safely, those new children that are just attending school for the first time. Lord, we pray that you be with them, be with their families, as they take this new educational experience, and get, help teach them, so that we can have the greatest and best educated children in this county, in this country, in this state. God indirect us as we make the decisions that affect the lives of these children, of these teachers, of this staff, of our custodians, of bus drivers and cafeteria workers, our administration, and central office, and our administrators in the schools and the teachers. Help us, Lord, to make the best decisions, to make their jobs the best that they can be, to give them the tools that they can use to help better the education of the children. God indirect us in all that we do, and we give you the praise and glory for it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'd like to announce that it's glad, we're glad to see Mr. Leatherwood back with us.
Glad to be back.
Walt, it's good to see you again, and I know that you've come through some tough surgery there, and we appreciate you coming tonight, and board members, we received a thank you note, I would like to pass around for, the board sent Mr. Leatherwood's fruit basket, and also he thanks us for the prayers that we gave before you, Walt, and believe me, we did lift you up in prayer, so you could have a speedy recovery.
Thank you.
If you pass that around. Under other announcements, I'd like to say that Mr. Bobby Rogers is here electronically. He's not here present, but he is via the telephone, which is made possible through our new policy that the board members can be in attendance via electronic means, I don't know all the terminology, but he's listening in on the telephone, and he will be voting on our issues if he has any discussion. Bobby, please feel free to join in. And also, we're also want to remind everyone to lift Bobby up, he's had some surgery also, he's doing really well. I talked to him earlier today, and I know he's listening in now, but we are lifting you up in prayer, Mr. Rogers. Board members, our next regular board meeting will be here at the Education Center on September the 12th, at 7:00 PM, and also, don't forget, the Haywood County Schools Foundation has their Fall Bingo coming up on August 20th, at 6:00 PM, in the wonderful facility at Canton, the Canton Armory, at 6 o'clock, be prepared to play some awesome bingo games, okay, and support the foundation. Mr. Francis, Jim Francis is on vacation, so he wouldn't be here tonight, and Mr. Kirk Patrick had another engagement that he had to attend this evening, so that's where the three absences on my left are. I'd also like to take this time to recognize our Board of Trustees appointee, Dr. Tom McNeil's with us tonight from the Haywood County, Haywood Community College Board of Trustees. Thank you for being here this evening, sir. We appreciate your service on behalf of the Haywood County Board of Education. Are there any other announcements that we need to make? All right, under Agenda adjustments, I have one item, since Mr. Francis is not here this evening, Ms. Milner will be presenting the regular financial reports on behalf of the Finance Committee, which did meet earlier this evening. Any other announcements? Okay, if nothing else, then we'll carry on with Dr. Ann Garrett with some special recognitions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to recognize the 2016-2017 Principal of the Year, Mr. Travis Collins. Mr. Collins is a two-time graduate of Western Carolina University, where he completed both undergraduate and graduate degrees. Presently, he is working on his doctorate from East Tennessee State University. He's taught grades one and two. Mr. Collins was a principal's fellow at Pisgah High School. He's been assistant principal at Wainsville Middle School and Pisgah High School, principal at Metta Brook Elementary, and Canton Middle School. Presently, he is the principal at Tuscola High School. Greg Bailey, principal at Pisgah High School, had this to say, "I have known Travis since grad school. He is always very professional and kid-centered. He provides a great place for teachers to work. Also, he is the best fly fisher I know." Jack, who is a rising sophomore at Tuscola High School, had this to say, "It's been a unique experience to have my dad as principal for eight years. While it has been both benefits and challenges, it's great to know he's always there. I strive every day to follow his example and do as well in my life as he has done and continues to do. As excellent a principal he is, he's an even better dad." Ruthie, a third grader at Bethel Elementary, said, "I think it's great he's Principal of the Year. He's done such a good job at every school that he has worked." And Finn, now that's their dog, "He enjoys it too. Maybe he should be Dog of the Year." Heather Hollingsworth, she thinks that Mr. Collins is an outstanding principal. He's very dedicated and committed to providing a great education for every child. Also, you should see him dance. That's all I have to say. I present to you Mr. Travis Collins, Haywood County's Principal of the Year. His certificate reads, "Principal of the Year, we the undersigned do hereby proudly present the 2016-2017 Haywood County Schools Principal of the Year Award to Travis Collins, in recognition of his outstanding contributions to the academic achievement and personal growth of his students, awarded the 8th day of August 2016 by Haywood County Schools. Congratulations again."
Thanks. (applause) Dr. Ann, and Mr. Francis, and other members of the board, and everybody gathered here, I just want to say what an honor it is to have been elected Principal of the Year by my peers, our principals and assistant principals in Haywood County. This year will mark my 16th year in Haywood County, and as Dr. Garrett has mentioned, I have been able to, have been blessed to have served in a lot of different places, and for a lot of different families, from Dutch Cove to the top of Balsam. I've either ridden on a bus, or drove a bus, or met with a family from all over this county, and it is such a privilege to be able to serve as a school administrator, as a principal, at Metta Brook, and at Canton Middle, and now at Tuscola, home of the Mountaineers. I'm just so blessed to be able to serve in that capacity, and I want to thank you for the privilege of being able to do that. I want to thank all those folks that I've learned from, when I think about the great school administrators that we've had in this county, from Danny Miller, to Keith Wyatt, to Jill Barker, to my good friends Jeff Haney and Heather Hollingsworth. We have such a tradition, a rich tradition of school leadership here. You don't just show up, and they hand you a set of keys, and you can be a school principal. If you're very blessed, as I have been, you get to learn from so many good other people that are in this system, so I want to thank all those folks that I've been able to serve and work for. But I wouldn't be here tonight if it were not for one person, and I think that this award really should probably go to Sweetie Pie. It is tough being the spouse of a principal, it's got to be incredibly tough being the wife of Travis Collins, and all I can say is I could not do this without her support. I do not say this enough, and I certainly don't in public settings, but you have changed my life in so many ways, and I love you so much, and I thank you for being there with me every day. So, thank you to all that are gathered here, and hope we have a great school year. Thanks again. (applause)
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Angie Gardner, would you please come forward? On July 20th, 2016, Finance Director Angie Gardner graduated from the North Carolina Association of School Business Officers Academy. This program was created in 2006 to develop school business leaders through a comprehensive training program in the area of school finance. The academy provides training to school business officials in order to promote the highest professional and ethical standards of school business management practices for North Carolina schools. To receive the designation of Certified School Business Director, candidates must meet the prerequisite of a BA or a BS in Accounting, Finance, or Business Administration. Upon acceptance into the academy, candidates are then required to complete 112 academy class hours with 24 core classes of accounting. Mrs. Gardner is the first Haywood County Schools Finance Officer to receive this designation. In 2016-17, she, along with the Henderson County Schools Finance Director, will serve as Region A Representatives of the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials Executive Council. Her certificate reads, "Certificate of Completion, the Executive Council of the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials, and the Faculty of the NCASBO School Business Management Academy are honored to certify that Angie Gardner has successfully completed all the requirements of a comprehensive training program in the area of school finance, and is hereby awarded the designation of NCASBO Certified School Business Director. Congratulations." (applause)
Thank you, Dr. Garrett, thank you, board, again, for allowing me to serve in this capacity. I'm a few years older than Mr. Collins, but this will be my 26th year with Haywood County Schools. I had four years with Cherokee County and a year in Wilkes, but I remember very clearly, I was 18-years-old, working in Alton Murphy at the Board of Education, and the superintendent was Dr. Roy Pipes, and he stressed very strongly that the Central Office is a support department, and that we were to do our jobs at a level to keep these folks focused on what they were paid to do, and that was to teach, and that meant making sure they were paid correctly and on time, if they had a travel reimbursement, making sure they understood where that process was, so that when they're in their classrooms, they weren't having to think, "Oh, I've got to call Central Office because my check wasn't right." And I still feel very strongly about that, and I'm blessed to have coworkers in the Finance Department that see these folks are what matter, and they're doing the important work out there, and our job is just to support them, and to keep their focus on what they are there to do, and that's to educate our children. Thank you. (applause)
Congratulations. I know your family's really proud. And Angie, Ms. Gardner, excuse me, I've known you a long time, you do an excellent job, and we're very proud of you and your accomplishments. Next on our agenda is an open session. Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the board? Okay, thank you. Board members, you actually got three sets of minutes to approve tonight. We have our closed session minutes from our last meeting, and our regular session minutes from our last meeting, and we also have the minutes from our Thursday night work session that has been presented to you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion that they be approved as presented.
I move it.
Okay, Mr. Hinson's made a motion, seconded by Ms. Milner. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have Dr. Carol Douglas.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I'm here to ask for your approval on Central Haywood High School's accountability model. The alternative school accountability model is a little different than the others. They have four options to choose from, from DPI, and we have chosen Option B, which is the same as we've done for the past two years, and what that is, is based on 20% student persistence, which means the number of students that stay in school, 20% school performance, and that's based on a three-year average, 60% growth, and again, that's on three years of data, and the piece that's different, or one of the main pieces that's different from the regular school accountability model is the ACT, because that piece is not indicative of what those students at Central Haywood are capable of or about. You can see in their percentages, they kind of fluctuate, and so that piece is not in their accountability model. So, we ask for your approval, and again, this is on three years of data, and it's the same we've done for the past two years.
We entertain a motion. Mr. Leatherwood's made the motion to approve the Central Haywood High School Accountability Proposal as Presented. Do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carol. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Dr. Bill Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, staff, and guests, last month, we brought to you the annual Health Department Agreement for Approval. It was changed very little, little from years past. After you approved it, we had a very small change request on page two, you can see that in your draft, that talks about immunizations, rather than administering them, what they actually do is they track those records and talk to families about the ones that they haven't had. So, they request that small change to the agreement you approved last month, and we concur that that should be made.
Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion that be approved as presented.
I mean, if we approve it.
Ms. Milner?
Second.
Say, and Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Leatherwood, the chairman of our Building and Grounds Committee.
On July 18th, 2016, Haywood County Schools Building and Grounds Committee made a recommendation to the full board that Central Elementary School Site be declared surplus and disposed of as per general statute. And I'd like for Ms. Garrett to make a few comments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information and for your analysis, the property located at 20, excuse me, 62 Joy Lane, the land is actually 10.3779 acres, and it's valued at $674,700. The building itself is valued at $3,301,000, for a total of $3,677,800. At this time, looking at the property, and looking at the projected enrollment and ADM for the next several years, I do not see a need for it at this time. Also, when you look at the financial upkeep of it, it would cost $40,000 per year to do the public utilities electrical part of it, 15 for the maintenance of it, and then for phone, internet, which we need for the security system, another 12,000. So, you can see that's $67,000 per year.
Okay.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that when I build the grounds, that Central Elementary School be declared surplus as per general statute, 115C-518.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Leatherwood. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say it, Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Smathers, I have a question. Our pending lawsuit, could that interfere with the sale of this property?
Mr. Chairman, board, Ms. Milner, I ask you a question. The plaintiff's request for a preliminary injunction to prevent the closing of Central Elementary School was dismissed by the court on July 19th. The lawsuit is ongoing, but there is nothing in that lawsuit or otherwise that would prevent the board from making a decision at this time, if the school is not needed for school purposes, declaring it surplus and moving forward. Along with that, I would add too, even though there is a pending lawsuit, I would say that it is unwise at any time to make sound governing decisions based merely upon allegations in a lawsuit, and you have to look at the relevant factors of each situation. So, answer your question is no, as I stand here, there is nothing in the lawsuit that would stop the sale of, or declaring it surplus, and following the procedure for real estate properties that's declared surplus by the school. Can I ask you a question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Smathers, or any comments? We have a motion in the second on the floor, do I, at this time, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Garrett, would you proceed with the proceedings of declaring it surplus, and let the county commission know that, about our decision? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Mark Shepherd on our agenda, and he's going to talk about policies, as well as some information on drug testing, and maybe a little update on that sixth grade athletic decision that was made earlier.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, first of all, we'll start out with that little snippet about sixth grade and sports. You know, there've been rumors flying for several months about whether that would happen or not, and nothing official came out from Raleigh, you know, whether they would vote to allow middle schoolers, I mean, sixth graders to play middle school sports. So, when I was at the coaches clinic a few weeks ago, the guy that was running the conference said, you know, "How many of you came just to find out if sixth graders were going to be able to play or not?" Just about everybody in the room raised their hand, they said, "Well, too bad, because we don't know yet." And since that time, in fact, on Friday, Thursday or Friday, they met both days, they voted to allow that, or at least to allow the LEAs to vote on whether they would allow sixth graders to play sports, with the exception of football. So, I'll read this statement that Dr. Nolte has prepared for us, based on that communication from Dr. Adkinson. "At last Thursday, State Board of Education meeting, members revised the state interscholastic athletics policy, which is HRSD001. The new policy changes the grade level at which students may participate in interscholastic competition from grades seven through 12 to grades six through 12. As part of this change, sixth graders, sixth grade students may participate in all interscholastic sports, with the exception of football. This policy allows each school system to determine whether or not the sixth graders may participate in interscholastic athletics, with the exception of football." So, I mean, it sounds big, and it could be big, but it's going to be a process. We need to talk to our people in our school buildings, you know, and ultimately, it will be you guys' decision whether Haywood County Schools will take part in this or not, but we want to make an informed decision, we want to know what our conference, the Blue Ridge Conference, how the other teams stand in it. I talked to one of our middle school athletic directors this morning, and he said the consensus of the ones he's talked to is that the last thing we want is a conference where some teams play with sixth graders and some don't. So, you know, that's where we are right now with it.
Okay. Do we need to take any action tonight, or we get, okay?
We don't want to do that in our work session, we can make this in general.
Okay.
So, I'll be in fact finding mode, and, you know, information gathering mode for you guys for that. So, if you have questions or specific things that you want to know, let me know, because I'll be dealing with the middle school folks on that.
It'd mostly be like Buncombe and Henderson County, that would it be, as well as those?
Transylvania, yeah.
Transylvania, okay.
Buncombe, Henderson, Transylvania, that's, there's a 12-member Blue Ridge Conference. It's a really nice conference, it's got a nice east-west aspect to it, championship games, you know, from the two, the two sides of the conference, and the conference gets along beautifully. They meet two or three times a year, they come up with the rules, and they really have a nice working relationship, so I think they'll be able to work it out very well.
Let us know how that's going, we'll discuss it again at our work session.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so for, the next thing, the next item is drug testing facts, at least random student drug testing facts for the school year we just finished out, the 15-16 year, and we discussed this the other night at the work session, and you had asked that we discuss it, you know, at the larger board meeting, so everyone could, you know, hear this information, so here we are. It is the former board policy SA15, which is now 4326, random student drug testing, and we started out with a total pool of 1,076 students this year, and that, those students come from Pisgah, Tuscola, Central Haywood High, and the Early College. And the way, according to the policy, students are placed into that pot or pool to be tested is that they participate in interscholastic activities, any kind of competitions, or they park a car on our campus. So, according to our policy, that's who makes up the pool. So, in the four different times that we've tested this year, we tested 255 students, that was 24% of the eligible pool, and like we discussed the other night, some of those were repeats. I'm not sure exactly how many, but a few were repeats, or kids that had been tested twice. Of those 255, 19 tested positive, and that represents just under 8%, like 7.45% of the ones we tested, and like we talked about the other night, there's a little bit of a trend there. Three years ago, we were at just under 2%, just under 4% the year after that, just under 6% last year, and this year, just under 8%. So, we're seeing a small, a small climb, but these are very small numbers, so, you know, one or two tests really do skew those numbers a lot, so.
Mr. Shepherd, what was the findings? I mean, I know you went over this, but mostly was it, it was not prescription drugs, or it was marijuana?
Marijuana, yes. The only other item that was tested was benzodiazepine, and, you know, everything else was pot. So, that does seem to be the drug of choice here, not that I'm, not that I'm negating the importance of that, I think it's very important that we're finding that, and I think the policy's doing exactly what it was intended to do, was to inform our parents, and to give them an opportunity to make an informed decision about the care of their own kid, and we do it in a very non-punitive way.
Thank you for sharing that. Any questions of Mark on that?
Total cost for the year, we spent $7,315 on that program.
Very good. Thank you.
And now, the board policies.
All right.
Okay, so the first section you have there are the last of the newly revised policies for our fully revised policy manual, and you'll see the first ones there, 1,200 through 17, I'm sorry, 1,800, represent governing principles that are, that just have been established by the State School Board Association, and they basically list every policy in the manual that pertains to that particular topic. So, if you were looking for something about removal of barriers, you could look at 1,700, and it would show you every policy, every reference to every policy that speaks of removing barriers to student learning. The only policy in that group for first read that is not one of those last brand-new policies is the 4326 random drug testing of students, and we've just tried to place a little caveat in there that we no longer will have to provide a printed copy of the 15-page drug testing policy to every participant, that we will guide them to that on the website, and if they request it, we'll hand them a printed copy. But it was getting to be, you know, thousands and thousands of copies, in a day where most people have internet access, you know, if not at home, on a computer, on a smartphone, so we wanted to take advantage of that to save us some money on copies. So we wanted to take advantage of that to save us some money on copies.
Okay. The first reading policies will be tabled until the next regular board meeting to allow public input.
Okay, so the second group there, another set mostly personnel policies in the 7,000 series, the only one in that one that is not one of the brand-new policies, we've already put it in place, is the 4150 school assignment. And as many times as we all looked through that policy, it still had a reference to Medawbrook and Central in it. Different lawyers and all of us and people in the schools had passed that policy, and almost in the very last paragraph, it still had a reference to schools of choice being Medawbrook as a year-round and arts, A-plus art school, Central Elementary. So we took those out. And we amended one little section, Section B, you know, the first of the policy. In the fourth paragraph, we made a notation there about early college applications when they needed to be in to Mr. Haney at the Early College, the latest date he could really effectively take those.
Board members, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading policies as listed.
So moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Shandival. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hinson. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Next, we have our Finance Committee Chair, Ms. Lynn Milner, Acting Chair this evening. Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Bring us our financial reports.
Earlier, we had a finance meeting, and Ms. Gardner presented all the monthly financial reports. Everything was in order. So at this time, I make a motion that we accept the monthly financial reports.
We have a motion from Ms. Milner to approve the monthly financial reports as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leatherwood. Any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Garrett?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, for your information, you have 17 separation from employments, you have 13 employee status changes, and one leave of absence. For your approval, you have 12 employments, 39 employee status changes, two leave of absences, 24 contracted positions, five substitutes, eight employee coaches, six non-employee coaches, five volunteer coach services, and eight contract renewals.
This time we entertain a motion that personnel be, as presented, be approved.
So moved.
Mr. Rogers made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Shandival. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, it's a pleasure to introduce our new Director of Exceptional Children, Mrs. Brandy Stevenson. Brandy was an exceptional children teacher in Lincoln County Schools for four years, then moved back to Haywood where she taught EC students for two years. She became the exceptional children's coordinator in 2006 and has remained until the approval for Director. Brandy is a graduate of Western Carolina University with a Bachelor of Science in Special Education and a Master's Degree in Curriculum and Supervision. She holds numerous certifications, including Learning Disabled, Mentally Handicapped, Reading, Curriculum, Technology, and Reading and Math Foundation's Instructor. She is committed to ensuring that we provide a free and appropriate public education that meets the needs of every individual child. She believes that all children carry special gifts inside of them, and it's our job as educators to discover and celebrate those gifts. I present to you Mrs. Brandy Stevenson, Director of Exceptional Children.
I always have to pull the mic down, because I'm always too short. Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte and everybody here, I just want to thank everybody for this opportunity. I'm so excited to, you know, our EC department is recognized as one of the best in the state, and I'm excited to be able to continue the work of the EC department, looking out for our kids that have the most needs, and working with, you know, I always tell our staff that we're a family, and we have the absolute best parents and students and staff, community, anywhere, I would put us up against anybody. So I'm so excited to be able to further the work of Joan Ferrara. So thank you, everybody, and I hope we have a great year.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, we have two new administrators that were approved tonight. I'm going to ask Mrs. Shipman, Principal Bethel Elementary, and Mrs. Rogers, Principal Hazelwood, to introduce their new Assistant Principals.
I have to raise this a little, Brandy. Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Chairman Francis, and Members of the Board, I first of all want to thank you so much for allowing Bethel Elementary School to have a part-time Assistant Principal. Thank you. Bethel has a history of having outstanding administration, and some of those administrators are here right now in this room. And it is with great pleasure and pride that I introduce to you Bethel's new Assistant Principal. She has taught fifth grade in Haywood County for 17 years now, and 12 of those years have been at Bethel Elementary School. She was recognized twice in Haywood County, once at North Canton and once at Bethel Elementary School for Teacher of the Year. She has completed renewing her National Board Certification in May of 2015, and she just completed her post-Master Certification in Elementary Leadership just in May of this year through Western Carolina University. And she was recognized as Western's recipient of Outstanding Courageous Leadership. And at this time, it is my honor and my privilege to introduce to you Ms. Amanda Watson.
I probably won't read this, but I wanted to have this close by. Chairman Francis, Members of the Board, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Garrett, what a privilege and honor it is to be an Assistant Principal at Bethel Elementary School. I'm so excited. I want to thank you. I know, I want to thank Ms. Shipman for fighting for this position to return to Bethel. So we're so blessed to be able to have this position back, and I appreciate, I know Ms. Shipman worked very hard to get this position here, and I appreciate your support as well. And I just want to thank her for being the leader and mentor. That was, as Ms. Man will attest to, the grueling part of being in grad school and trying to teach, but with mentors like we've had, it makes it a whole lot easier. So thank you for your leadership. I also want to thank Jill Barker, my former principal as well. She encouraged me to go back to school to do this kind of work from day one, and I thank you for that, because I might not be here without you, so thank you. Thank you. And I just want to thank my family, you know. Part of going back to grad school is sacrifice, and they've been such a blessing to me, my husband Brad and Letty Jo and Tate, and I just love them to pieces. I also want to thank my dad and stepmom, who are a lot of times caregivers and helpers, and we can't live without their help as well. So, and I want to thank the good Lord, because I know he brought this together. And so, without keeping you any longer, thank you. I look forward to this opportunity. I hope to make you proud, and I just appreciate my friends and coworkers, and this is a family at Bethel. Bethel the beautiful, Bethel the best. And as you can see, I feel very loved and supported, and I hope to support them half as much as they have already with me and continue to do so. So thank you all as well, but thank you again.
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Chairman Francis, Members of the Board, it is with great pleasure and a huge honor to recognize tonight the new Assistant Principal at Hazelwood Elementary School. She lives in Canton, and she is no stranger to education. Jill Mann has been working at Haywood County Schools for a number of years and has lots of, has done lots of work in the elementary school. And I'm sorry, I don't have that big long list like Kim did, but I know she's got a lot of things coming to Hazelwood, and I'm very excited about it. She has been doing a lot of great work at North Canton Elementary, and I see tears flowing over there from Miss Trantham tonight. However, my face is extremely joyful, because I'm still in her, and I'm so glad. I'm sorry, Belinda, but I am so thankful. I think there are tears of joy on her part, too, but I know that there's a little bit of sadness, because Jill Mann is coming with a great deal of experience, a great background in education, very knowledgeable of the curriculum, and she is going to be a wonderful support to our administrative team and to our teachers, to our staff, and I know that it's going to be a great year at Hazelwood. So I'm really excited that even though she lives in Canton, she is a mountaineer at heart, and it is not going to be hard to get her to put on a Tuscula Mountaineer sweatshirt when we play the Black Bears at home. So it's okay with, I look forward to her leadership at Hazelwood, and I am very excited to recognize Jill Mann as a new Assistant Principal at Hazelwood Elementary School.
I'm not going to look at Belinda while I talk, because I won't be able to speak. Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Chairman Francis, and other board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'm kind of scared, because I've been at North Canton for so long, and I'm going to really miss my North Canton family. But I also want to thank Ron Moss, and, who's not here tonight, and Mr. Barbie for pushing me to do this, because I really enjoyed it, and I feel like this is my next step, and this is what I'm ready for. I want to thank Belinda for being a great mentor. She's taught me a lot. And my family especially, who, they're not here tonight, we have a German student, and I didn't think she would want to come to a board meeting. But especially-
Are you implying she'd be bored at a board meeting?
She might be.
She was at church today.
She was at church yesterday. She didn't make it through church. But my husband, who has been a great support, because just like Amanda said, they're the ones who take the blunt, you know, putting my kids to bed and then getting back up and doing all the work, and my poor husband had to suffer. But he made it through it. He said that I've been in school ever since we've been married. And as an educator, I'm sure I'll be in school for the rest of my life. So I'm glad he's used to that. Thank you all again.
It's not bad. I am a Black Bear, my blood runs red. But my child and my husband went to Tuscula, so we are Piscullians. It's a new term, Jill.
When I was at North Canton, we had, you know, Lynn and I both actually graduated from Tuscula. And so I would wear my Tuscula jersey and walk into the cafeteria, and I would get booed out. So at least now, when I wear my Tuscula jersey, I won't get clapped.
We're not going to let you wear it around home. I want to do it at your house. We'll not allow it at your house.
Well, I just like to, congratulations to Brandy Stevenson, congratulations to you, and we look forward to working with you in the future, and I know you'll do great things. And Amanda, congratulations. We know that you'll do well, and I know that wonderful things happen at Bethel Elementary School. And Jill Mann, I've known you since you were a little girl, and you've raised my kids.
She sure did. She's been an educator longer than you can imagine. She educated me on how to be a good dad, so. Anyway, Jill babysat for my three wild Indians, and I appreciate what you did then, and look forward to working with you in your new role at Hazelwood.
Is there anything else that needs to come before the board? If not, meeting adjourned.